Good evening and welcome to the work session for the Board of Education of Welp County School District Six. This meeting will now come to order. Ms. Lemon, will you please call the roll? Director Ozari?
Present.
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Campos Pitsi? Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood? For board members, present.
Right, well, thank you all for being here. Sorry we ran a little bit late with our executive session, but there's only four of us here, so our board comments will go a little bit faster. First on our agenda is to review the calendar. We have a big celebration Prairie Heights 10 Year Celebration. Please plan to be there, as well as the Great Education Colorado Luncheon, and Ms. Lemon will need RSVPs for that, or I don't know, has that boat sailed?
We've already set the...
Okay, that's a great event if you're able to come to that. And then we have our first school visit to Fred Chardis on the 7th at 12:30. That will be great to get to see what they're working on this year. And then down towards the end of October, the Weld Community Foundation spread the good luncheon. That will also require an RSVP for Ms. Lemon.
If your RSVP has changed, please let me know. I have submitted that.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Anything to add? All right, and we will move along to our board member comments. Mr. Matthews, would you like to start?
Gladly, President Mash. It's been... Finally, we're starting to do a few more things. Schools up and running. We've had a couple of breakfasts that have been fun. Dream team breakfast, always always so inspirational to hear from what they're doing, but also hear from alumni. Superintendent was honored, our superintendent was honored as the educator of the year. Well deserved. Then also, we had a breakfast this morning with the GPO and appreciate what they provide for the community, but especially for our students, and the ability for our students to have a role in that organization and the young orchestra, or the youth orchestra that they have. To get to hear from them, just appreciate so much the partners that we have in this community and the way that they love on our district and love on our students.
Thank you. Mr. Ozari?
Thank you, President Mash. I have three items to speak to. The first is, I agree with Michael Matthews on the Greeley Philharmonic event. It was a very, very well-done event. I would like to thank the Madison administration and their staff also for making that school so welcoming and supporting the community members that were coming in to see that event. My second item is that I'm the board ambassador to Centennial Elementary, and I attended their family engagement night this past week. There were so many parents there, I could barely make it through the hallways. It was just packed. But what struck me even more, and I hope this is happening throughout our community, is the involvement of the community at the event. They were there to support the families and the kids. Like the Greeley Philharmonic, we have local businesses and government organizations and nonprofits that directly help our schools with service and support. That night, I spoke to members from the Greeley Police Department that were there making connections, the Evans Police Department, the High Plains Library District, Sam's Club, Sunrise Community Health, and the Ames Adult Education and ELL Service were there. In addition, JBS Chevron and Welp Food Bank were all recognized for their direct support of that school. So, very impressive event. Kudos to the Centennial folks for making their schools so welcoming. And finally, I had the honor to ride in the back of a pickup truck, along with President Mash, at the Greeley Central Homecoming Parade. And it was a beautiful day for the homecoming parade, but as President Mash knows, I'm glad I didn't fall out of the truck. It almost happened a couple of times, but I'm here to say it was great.
We had to stand. We couldn't sit in the back. That was...
Thank you.
Made it a little more interesting. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I also attended the breakfast this morning with the GPO, and it was just a great, like Dorn said, it was a great event and very well-run. And we definitely are very lucky to live in a community that's so supportive of all assets of our district. So, that's about all I had.
Thank you. I attended the Community Council on Education, which is our partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and our higher ed, as well as District Six, and the focus was on direct admission to UNC. So, that's a really exciting kind of new pilot program. Our rising seniors receive an email in the summertime. If they have met that, you know, they're on track for graduation and their GPA is greater than 3.0, they have automatically been admitted to UNC. So, we're excited that this will increase interest, enrollment, and even, I loved to hear, what's his name? I forget, I'm sorry. The man from UNC who was so passionate about...
Pete Ling.
Pete Ling, yes. He's passionate about Greeley, which is always fun to hear someone who didn't grow up here, to just celebrate the beautiful things about our community. But he was saying, of course, we would love all of our students to go to UNC, but even if it just inspires them that they have been accepted to a university and just broadens their horizons and opens up that possibility for them, that they could get into other schools as well. I just love that bigger-picture celebration for our students. If they get into one university, the sky's the limit. So, that was a really positive meeting. And then I also was invited to speak to a career exploration class at Northridge. I got to speak to three classes and just share about my career in nursing, and they asked really great questions, really deep questions. What's the hardest thing about your job? What's your biggest celebration? What would you do differently? Things that I had not necessarily thought of for myself. And they were just really engaged, and that was great. Happy homecoming. I think all of our high schools have celebrated homecoming in the last couple of weeks. So, yeah, just fun, fun fall time, getting into everything. All right, we're still, we're getting there. We're making up a little bit of time. We would like to welcome our Fulbright scholars and hear about their experiences here in District Six.
Thank you, President Mash. And Mrs. Overton will join us and do some introduction to this. And while she's making her way, I'd like to just recognize Representative Gate... Excuse me, Ryan Gonzalez. I know Ryan Gonzalez, who is here in our meeting tonight. And Mr. Bentley and I had an opportunity to be a part of an event a little earlier, and so I know you've had a long day, but thank you for joining us tonight, and thanks for being our representative.
Thank you. We're glad to be here to talk tonight about the partnership with the Fulbright and with, between Fulbright Program and the University of Northern Colorado. That's an exciting program for them. They've had for 16 years now. They've hosted a cohort. This year, currently, they have 22 students and representing 21 countries. And so, it's a wide group of people from across the globe. Typically, what they go through, and they'll talk a little bit more about that when they come up here, but they go through six weeks of professional learning here in Greeley, so they get a chance to really get a flavor for what's in Northern Colorado. There's secondary teachers only from around the globe. It is a rigorous and highly competitive group of people that, or the application processes. And then their application has to go through the embassy and also then goes through Fulbright commissions. So, it is an intensive program for them to get in. Many apply and few are accepted. So, I'd like to introduce Kate Pearson to come on up, and Sergey, and Raquel. Both of them will go through, Kate will talk a little bit more. Please come up, and she'll introduce her team as well. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. My name is Kate Pearson. I am the Assistant Director of Custom International Programs at the University of Northern Colorado, and I am this year's co-director of the Fulbright TEA Program. We are very excited to be welcoming 22 participants from 21 countries. We are having them at three different District Six schools this year, which we're very excited about. We have representatives from Brentwood Middle School and Greeley West High School, and we also have seven participants who have their placements at Greeley Central High School. So, they're all very excited to learn from your teachers and the school communities and really get in and be a part of that. They do their field experiences. Once a week, every Wednesday, throughout the school day, they're paired with a local host teacher, and they get to co-teach together and really, you know, learn from our school district, but also have our teachers learning from them, which is just such a great intercultural knowledge share that UNC is so proud to facilitate. We also have them doing four classes while they're on campus. So, they take Principles of Pedagogy, they take English as a Foreign Language, Social Studies, and Education Technology. So, our teachers are mostly English-language teachers, but we also have a few social studies teachers from around the world with us, as well as one special needs teacher from Malaysia who is with us this year, and is our first special needs teacher in any cohort. So, we're very excited to have her learn from the school district and all of the offerings that you have. So, I don't think that there's anyone better to talk about the program than the participants themselves. So, I am very excited to introduce Raquel, who is from Bolivia, and then we have Sergey, and he is from Latvia. And they'll share a little bit more about what brought them to Fulbright, their experiences. For most people, it's over a year application process and visa process in order to take part in this program, and a little bit more about what they're expecting to learn during their District Six placements and what they're hoping to give to their teachers in return. So, thank you so much for having us again this year. We're very excited to be here.
Good afternoon. My name is Raquel Cruz-Brado. I'm from Bolivia. I'm an English teacher in the rural area of La Paz City. I am also founder of Pancarita, which is an organization for empowering young people in rural area through education. I also do some projects in my country, social projects that are related with education. Right now, we are starting a project in Bolivia called She Grow, She Leads, that is funded by the American Embassy in Bolivia. I also participated in other projects. I'm also ambassador for Bolivia in Youth Opportunities Organization, which is also an organization for opportunities for young people. And also, I'm community leader in Aspire Leaders Program, which is also a program from Harvard University in my country. So, well, we are here in the Fulbright TEA Program, which is something really amazing for me. I've applied last year. It took me one year to be here, and all the process, it took me like one year. Well, some of my goals here in the Fulbright Program is not only learn, but also apply. All the strategies I could learn from my teachers, professors, and also my, with the teacher I'm going to be working in Brentwood School, and take it to my school in Bolivia, which is, as I told you, is a rural school. So, we need a lot of things that we have to develop in my school. So, this was perfect for me. I also brought some strategies, English strategies, here. So, I'm going to be sharing with the teacher here in Brentwood. What I would like to do also is to inspire young people in my country and also here, because many things can be possible if students just put a lot of effort on it and study, and also, they do it, because I did it, I did many things. But I was studying in a public school, and also, I studied in a public university. So, I got here with many scholarships. So, I want to inspire young people that they can, they can like achieve their goals with their own effort. Yeah. So, it's not just education. For me, it's also inspiration, what brought me here to be a Fulbright, to be in the Fulbright TEA Program. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Does it work? I'm very grateful for being invited to this board session. My name is Sergey Ivanov. I am an English as a Foreign Language and Cultural Studies and Theory of Knowledge, IB Theory of Knowledge teacher in Latvia, which is a small coastal country in Northeastern Europe. Yes, and I have applied for this program, I think, one year and a half ago in March 2024. So, it took me one year and a half to get here. It's my first time in America. It's my first visit to the States, in the States of America, and it's our, well, 10th, I think it's 10th or 9th day here in America. And yeah, the emotions and the impressions and the insights I get, they are absolutely outstanding. Every day, I learn something new about American way of life, about how, also how school districts, how they manage and govern education here. In Latvia, in comparison, we have a centralized education system. So, here in America, it's decentralized, and school districts, yeah, get to decide on many things. So, I'm getting to know your education system, and also, I was sent to, I was allocated to Greeley West High School, and which is an amazing, amazing, fantastic, huge building with amazing students and, yeah, and fantastic teachers. We had only one day of field experience there, so we have five more days to go. Every Wednesday, we go there from 7:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. We Fulbright scorers, we soak up the, we soak in the, all that we can get our hands to in our schools. So, yeah. And a few more facts about me. This is the school where I work at in Latvia. So, I am, the school is situated in the capital of Latvia, in Riga. So, maybe some of you have been to that part of Europe. Yeah, it's right in the middle, in the heart of Riga. As you can see, there are churches and towers in the background and historical buildings. And so, it's a very, well, very pretty, beautiful, advantageous location for many of our students. And our students are very rigorous and high-driven, because our school has a special status of so-called gymnasium, which is not what you probably have thought about. It's not a gym, yeah? Because, yeah, in America, gymnasium, it's a gym, a place where people work out. In Europe, even though the word has the same roots, but in Europe, it has a slightly different meaning. Gymnasium is a secondary or high school that prepares students for academic, for the academics, for university. So, therefore, our school is mostly made up of students who are ready to embark on this highly demanding journey and to prepare for universities. And we were also required by the state to perform slightly better than all the other schools, which is a bit of a discrepancy. But still, yeah, this is the place where I work at. And yeah, what brought me here, what made me apply for this program, for Fulbright Teacher Excellence and Achievement Program, is, well, first of all, I would like to, I would like to better and improve my teaching competence in many, many different ways. By first of all, by learning, learning, and maybe refreshing the theory which we can, which we do in the classes in the university, yeah, in all those courses. And then also, to getting this hands-on experience in my school, in Greeley West High School. Learning from the colleagues, learning from the other teachers, also seeing and observing the classes and the students, how they learn and what they learn, and how the things are done here. And then also, I hope to bring something from my perspective to the school where I now placed at, the Greeley West High School. I have really big, huge plans for the classes that we will co-teach with the teacher who was assigned to me. And I wish to also try out some new methodologies, new methods in teaching English as a foreign language, well, as a second language in this case, because in Greeley High School, that's what the subject is called, English as a Second Language. So, yeah, those are my expectations, my goals, and I'm really looking forward to bettering my teaching competence and sharing something from my experience with you, with the co-teachers in Greeley West, with the students, and also taking away from this amazing journey, taking some insights, methods, ideas away back to Latvia, to make Latvia, at least locally, or where I work, in the place where I work, a better place. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you both for being here and for sharing your journey to get here. And so, you're kind of at the beginning. You have five more weeks here, is that correct? Yeah, so like six weeks in the schools. Very cool.
You will see, you'll see them, all of them will be coming to the next board meeting, or the board meeting October 13th.
Okay.
They'll be coming and observing. That's one of the things that they do when they come here, is to observe a school board meeting, and so they'll all come that night. Nobody will be necessarily speaking, but they'll at least be observing all the work that you all do.
Well, I'll open it up to questions. I'll think of some I was going to ask. I think in the past, we've asked sort of like, what is, and you're at the very beginning, but maybe one thing that you are impressed with, or that you hope to take back, and then one thing that maybe you think we could improve on. And if it's too early to tell, that's okay, too.
One thing that I like here from Greeley is that there are very friendly people. So, I'm going to take this. Also, many pictures, because it's very different from my country. But I'm learning a lot. I would like to improve also, yes, Sergey said, some of the theory that sometimes we as teachers forgot, forget. Yeah. And also, I would like to improve that and to go to my country and also help my colleagues as teachers.
Thank you.
Well, I will take away a few specific things. First of all, I will say thank you and excuse me way more often back in Latvia, because this is what I noticed here in America. People say, people are lovely and friendly and welcoming. People say thank you and excuse me way more often than in my country. Yes, that's true. That's true fact.
Good.
Yes, and they smile more also. Here, people smile way more often than in my country. This is, these are the more kind of a physical, cultural things that I would like to pick up myself and take away. Yes, and from my teaching experience and from the classes which we have in the university, well, I would definitely take away, well, I'm already almost, almost finished my notebook. It's already full of notes from the classes. So, there are so many things which either, as you, as Raquel said, either we have forgotten as teachers from the university times what we learned, the principles of pedagogy, maybe some approaches, teaching approaches, some methodologies, yeah? Maybe we went heavy on one particular approach in our classrooms as a habit, and we forgot about the others. So, those things are definitely, will definitely will come away, well, will be taken away from this experience with me, with my notes and notebooks and notes from the classes, as well as, yeah, how, I'm very curious. I haven't, I haven't seen many classes yet in Greeley West, but I would like to see as many as I can. Also, taught and delivered by other teachers. I have my co-teacher, but he was friendly enough, or he was welcoming, and he offered me to see other classes delivered by his colleagues in high school, high school teachers. So, I'd like to see how, or what approaches and methods the teachers use, what strategies they employ in engaging students, in motivating them, sustaining their motivation, and giving feedback to them, how strict or how mild they are in communication with the students, how formal, informal they are in their style of communication with their students. So, all those things, even though I do have my own, because I've been teaching for about five years, I do have already my own kind of established habits and styles back in Latvia, but still, those things are, they, well, you should never shut, shut down your mind, but be open to alternative visions and ways of teaching, which I'm really hoping to get from my experience in Greeley West. Thank you.
Sergey, you mentioned that you taught Theory of Knowledge in an IB school. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Have you gotten to witness the Theory of Knowledge class yet at Greeley West? And how does the class compare?
Not yet, not yet. Because we only had one day, the first introduction day, when we had a tour around the school, and I saw one class of ESL taught by my co-teacher, and then we had a friendly chat with them after the class. So, that's all I got to see. So, but I'm really hoping to see more. And I've been teaching TOK only for one year. I'm a freshman, fresher. So, I'm, I'll be glad to steal some ideas from more experienced teachers once I get the opportunity. So, maybe next Wednesday or, you know, in the following weeks.
Well, either of you have the opportunity to observe or participate in any of the like extracurricular sporting events, or I was going to tell you, especially Sergey, this next Friday is the big crosstown rivalry football game. um I was gonna tell you especially Sergey, this next Friday is the big crosstown rivalry football game. Yeah, between Greeley West and Greeley Central, but I know there's a lot of athletics at Brentwood as well. Round out your experience.
Well, thank you for sharing your perspectives. And keep doing it and um it's good for our kids to have you and working with them so that they can have, they can see a more global vision of the world as well. Well, thank you.
Um yeah, and please share with, with your host teachers as well, things that you like the way you do in your country that we could also improve upon, you know, definitely the sharing of those perspectives, so.
May I say something?
Yes, please.
A few more comments. So basically, what, what we have planned, and I've talked with my colleagues from the other participants of this, of this course, what they're going to do with the students in their schools, at the schools here in America. Uh and uh well, uh obviously, most of us will do our country presentations, which is a very good, uh which could be a useful way of introducing the students to uh uh countries different from their own and cultures different from their own. And this, the phrase that you mentioned, global perspective, this phrase, this key phrase is very frequent in the guidelines which we received from from uh from Fulbright, from IREX, uh what we're supposed to expect it to do with the students here in America. So we are, one of the outcomes for us is to uh show those global perspectives to the students and to show them that uh, yeah, uh uh there are many different cultures, cultures out there and we are, yeah, and they, the students are now at advantage because we have come from all those countries from around the globe to um first of all, to all show our best intentions uh and to uh, yeah, make our friendship between the countries, our countries in America stronger and to show the students the global perspective on, on, on the world. So yeah, that's what, what they're going to do, is to introduce them to our countries, to our cultures. Um one, one activity which I, which I have in mind is comparing, contrasting European and American culture. So what we have or sharing, have in common, what we share, what is different? For example, coins are different, yeah? So in Europe, on European coins, you have this digit, uh how, how, how much the coin is worth, one euro, two euros. In America, you have other symbols and you have to read closely what it says there on the coin. Yeah, so is it fifty pence or something else? It's a quarter, which is quite interesting, you know, very small cultural observation. That's cool. Yeah, that's actually cool, to teach about those, those things. And one more thing which I have in mind is, I have brought with me forty-four letters from my students to American students. So I have asked three of my classes to write um now rather informal, friendly letters to uh as, as, an American stranger, yeah, some student in an American school, so they're gonna students in Greeley West are going to read those letters and they're going to respond to them, they're gonna write them back to my students uh which, and those letters I will take with me back to Latvia. And probably even whenever it turn back, we may even uh make a live session on Zoom, for example, via Zoom between my school and Greeley West to talk about uh how we live in our countries, the way of life, our cultures and norms and morals and values and hobbies and sports we uh we play and so on. So those are the activities which I have in mind and many of my colleagues also, they're gonna do something similar. So thank you.
Well, well, thank you so much for being here and best wishes in the next five weeks. We'll see you at the next meeting. Yes, thank you. Last on our agenda is our CASB resolutions. Thank you, Nate Fall. Wow, a military stock.
Thank you, President Mash, Dr. Pilch, members of the board. Uh my name is Nate Fall, I'm legal counsel for the school district. We are gonna talk through the Colorado Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly Resolutions. We're doing this a little bit different and this is more of just a fact info session. We didn't opine on a particular side, opposition or support for any of these resolutions in advance of the delegate assembly. Uh there were a number of resolutions that were moved forward. So we're just gonna, I'm just gonna speak to those. Certainly, if you have any questions, let me know. This is what CASB is gonna be moving forward. So just as a reminder, every year the CASB Delegate Assembly meets, they discuss proposed legislative policy action for the upcoming General Assembly Session. These are usually pretty broad topics. Generally, though, those resolutions are brought by school districts with very specific issues that their school districts are facing that they are hoping to get some bills forward in front of lawmakers uh to hopefully make changes to the law for the upcoming year. But the delegate assembly does review those kind of district-specific resolutions that are proposed uh and they can propose them as a body through CASB. So um unless you have any questions, then that I'll just get straight to it. Uh if you go to the small packet that I shared with you, starting on page five, you can see past twenty twenty-five legislative resolutions. The larger packet, these were the proposed resolutions that the delegate assembly looked at. There's a lot more information on these past resolutions that you can refer to at another time, but I just wanted to share that with you in case you were curious and wanted to read a little bit more for what they were actually reviewing. So legislative resolution number one is a pretty much an annual resolution that CASB moves forward and that's essentially to commit to not having unfunded mandates uh provided upon school districts. So we know, for example, accessibility laws, this is not unique to school districts in Colorado. This is certainly something that is unfunded, something that we've spent a tremendous amount of time and money working on to make sure that our information communication technology, ICT, is accessible to individuals with disabilities. I can also speak to record sharing laws that were passed last year. Mandatory trainings, for example, are a common one. I often get blamed for, which I'm okay, getting blamed for all the mandatory trainings that we have, but right now we have seven, I believe, six or seven trainings that all staff have to take at the beginning of the year. And it's a huge headache to get the staff to take all those trainings in time for school or find time uh leading up to September to get all those trainings done. And that's just a huge hassle. So CASB, again, year after year, please with the General Assembly to stop requiring these unfunded mandates. And that's certainly something that I would recommend we support and something that, uh as legislation or proposed bills are being pushed forward, that's certainly something that I'm looking into uh to determine whether or not those are bills that we want to oppose moving forward. Um I think another thing that's not really included in this are timelines. This is something we haven't seen so much in the past, but usually bills will say by September first of the next year, you must do X or you must do Y. And that usually doesn't give us enough time uh to make sure that we're fully in compliance by that date. It's certainly something that I'll be looking at in future proposed legislation to make sure that we have enough time to catch up to any new changes to the law. And you can stop me as we're moving if you have questions. If not, I'll just keep moving forward. The second Legislative Resolution Two is really a voucher issue. Again, this is really what CASB is proposing and they are opposing any uh school vouchers or any legislation that expands voucher programs. Colorado is not one of the states that has a voucher program. We know that there are, I think, twenty states right now that have some version of a voucher program in the United States. Uh CASB has always been opposed to voucher programs and they continue to be in this instance. Legislative Resolution Number Four, this is coming from rural districts, looking into the implementation of House Bill twenty-five thirteen ten. We know that was the changes made to the School Finance Act. Uh a lot of that came from last year where the General Assembly extended the, the timeframe for when those full changes will be implemented into the School Finance Act. Uh we know that our rural districts are gonna be hit the hardest uh when it comes to these potential changes. And so this resolution really, if you turn to the next page on page six, you can see exactly what CASB is recommending. Uh and ultimately, it's kind of a review panel to see how these changes to the School Finance Act might affect rural districts the most. Uh and depending on kind of what impacts are made to rural districts, um providing some forms of relief to rural districts in particular to ensure that they're still getting the funding that they need to support the students that they have. Uh given that we know that in, in some rural communities, enrollment is going down, uh which is certainly a huge proponent of school, the School Finance Act. And so if enrollment is going down, they're gonna be getting less funding. And these districts are already kind of struggling with the financial resources that they have. Uh and therefore, CASB's aim is to make sure that those districts are still protected. Uh under local governance, Legislative Resolution Six. This one came from Adams twelve, just so you know, and they're wanting to modify Mental Health Residential Facilities Law. Uh and so really what happened here is in Adams twelve, I'm not sure exactly what town it was in. They opened up a residential facility for sex offenders uh very close to a school. Uh and that was, of course, very concerning to the community in Adams twelve. And so they wanna make sure that there are safeguards regarding distance restrictions for housing sex offenders. Uh again, this is one of those resolutions that's specific to a school district, but certainly I think would benefit all school districts by having uh this type of legislation out there. Uh and I know I'm moving quickly, but just in the interest of time, Legislative Resolution Seven. This uh has to do with charter school appeals. Um and this is to kind of take some of that authority away from the State Board of Education, which currently kind of operates as a quasi judicial appeal authority for charter applications, for example. If a school charter, if a group wants to open a charter school in a community and that local authorizer denies that chartering um request, then they can appeal that to the State Board of Education, who can override the local authorizer. Uh we are an authorizer in our community for the charter schools. We haven't really dealt with this issue. I think we have a really great relationship with all of our charter schools in this community. Uh but certainly this seems to be an issue because, and, and I just pulled some, some data, this is from a Chalkbeat article that over the last three years, uh the State Board of Education has sided with charters on all but two cases. Um and so I think that for local governing authorities, this is becoming a bit of a concern that the State Board of Education isn't really taking into account that local control piece when it comes to making decisions that best serve that local community.
Are you, are you seeing this um potentially moving forward? Uh that this could actually be a thing that the legislators are gonna be looking at?
It's, it's possible. Um I haven't personally heard of, of what school districts are working with, what specific lawmakers and what that law or that bill might look like. But certainly, uh as with any case, I think local control is a major piece uh in Colorado and certainly giving as much local control to you, the Board of Education, and making those decisions that best serve your community is always at top of mind for CASB. So I wouldn't be surprised if we see some legislation this year, proposed legislation this year uh to address this issue.
Okay.
Uh again, this isn't necessarily something that we've encountered in this community, but certainly I know that there are. I think Durango School District actually proposed this particular resolution. So maybe something happened there. Legislative res-
Mr. Vol, can I ask you a question? Do we know where charter schools um are on this particular piece of legislation?
It's a good question, yeah.
Because I know when we, when we've had, um I'm thinking of the last instance where the school was looking at being chartered here. Uh our greatest concern was how it would impact our other charter schools. And so I didn't know maybe how charter schools felt about, about that.
You know, I, I, you know, I think at least right now, perhaps charter schools may not be super in support of legislation in this regard, but you know, depending on how the partisan makeup is of the State Board of Education, if they begin to start siding more with local um chartering authorities more rather than the charter schools themselves, then maybe charter schools will want local control, more local control, right? And so, you know, it just kind of depends on who's on the State Board of Education and who's making those decisions. So I think right now, perhaps charter schools might be really appreciating, or the folks that wanna have charter schools might be really appreciating where the State Board of Education has been, but perhaps if there's a change in the tide, they might want more local control. It's possible they might just want a whole different appeal process altogether, maybe just a standalone appeal board perhaps might be another option.
I think our local charters, uh they may differ than, say, the Charter School Institute on this or the League of Charter Schools, simply because we're pretty saturated with charters and, and to your point, um Director Michaels, or Director Matthews, uh excuse me, um to your point, it has typically been the reaction of our, our existing charters that um they do not desire a greater number of charter schools in District Six because they, you know, they they know we're pretty saturated with charters and to add another charter school would possibly pull enrollment off of their schools. So they had, they, they, they have been pretty content with the numbers of charters we have, unlike other communities where it's been very difficult to get a charter school to open and operate in some of our neighboring districts.
Gotcha. Thank you.
But we can ask them. Ask our charter schools.
Yep.
And there isn't currently legislation, this is a CASB resolution, to pursue it, so more information in the future.
Uh Legislative Resolution Nine, this is an interesting one. I believe this is proposed by St. Vrain Valley School District to again, restore local control over the professional practice component of teacher evaluations. They wanna make it so that there is, that boards of education, for example, can develop their own standards for teacher evaluations because at least the current system was last developed, I think it was two thousand and ten was when, so Senate Bill ten one ninety-one is the current teacher evaluation system when that was developed, so it's fifteen years old, right? Um and we know that it, there are some positives to the current evaluation system, but there are certainly some drawbacks to it. I think if anything, they're just wanting to look at uh updating the current evaluation system, but right now, the way they propose it is to kind of allow local boards of education to develop their own evaluation systems. I think that there are some potential challenges with teacher transfers from one district to another and knowing if they're effective in this school district, might they be effective in this other school district? So certainly there'd be some guardrails that would need to be put in place, but I think if anything, uh it's just to put an eye towards revising the current system for teacher evaluations. And then uh under other Legislative Resolution Ten, this is to establish nonpartisan elections for members of the Colorado State Board of Education. I think it logically follows that local boards of education are nonpartisan. You all ran not on party lines, uh but currently the State Board of Education, for whatever reason, does run on party lines. Um and so they would like to establish some legislation that would make it so that State Board of Education members uh would also run on nonpartisan lines. And then the last uh resolution, this actually came on the floor, so I don't have a ton of information about it. But what I can say, and I'll just read it, is CASB supports an amendment to the Colorado Constitution exempting state money appropriated for school finance from local Tabor reserve requirements. So what I can say is right now there's a double Tabor reserve. And so right now, under Tabor, the state of Colorado must maintain an emergency reserve of at least three percent of its budget, which includes education. Um and then after the state appropriates these funds to local school districts, uh districts must also reserve three percent of their budget, uh which includes the state funds that they receive. So it's kind of a double reserve, which could be up to six percent of a budget that you're receiving every year. And so they want to exempt that local, that second three percent, so it's not kind of a double reserve, if that makes any sense. Um I can get more information on that, but that's the best I can do for you right now. That is everything. This is a pretty short list of resolutions. I think this really ties into that first one that we talked about, about unfunded mandates. I think people are getting a little bit tired of all the legislation that's been coming forward and kind of enforcing school districts to do this and do that and change um everything that we're doing. So I think if anything, we just kind of wanna see a little bit less legislation placed on school districts. Um I do appreciate that Representative Gonzalez is in the room tonight. I do appreciate that Representative Gonzalez is in the room tonight, certainly willing to work with, with you more this year, as we're seeing more bills come out, and it's great just to see lawmakers here supporting this school district. So if we don't have any other questions, that's, that's everything I have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Fall. All right, we will quickly debrief the work session and enjoy dinner prepared by our nutrition services. Let's see, Mr. Rosari, would you like to go first?
Sure. Again, welcome to the scholars that have come here on the Fulbright. It's, it's great having you here in our community, and we love hearing your insights. And Representative Gonzalez, thank you also for being here. On the CASB resolutions, I'm, once again, I'm glad we have an attorney, because when he says he's confused with something, you know where we stand. So, you know, I look forward to hearing more about some of these and trying to figure out what they actually say. So, thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, just again, thank you to our Fulbright scholars for being here tonight. Thank you to Representative Gonzalez for being here. Appreciate the info, Mr. Fall.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Ditto. Yeah, it was a good meeting. Thanks for everything you guys do, day in, day out.
Yes, thank you to our guests. Thank you for sharing your experience, and I hope maybe I'll run into some of you after you've been here a little bit longer to hear a little more about your experience. And thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Um, yeah, and thank you for the resolutions update. I see there are a couple that look like they were tabled, so I don't know if they will discuss them again at the December meeting, but we can look into those as well, yeah. All right, this portion of the meeting is adjourned. See you at the business meeting.